Good evening, everyone. Call to order, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine of justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nardi, would you take the roll, please?
Here.
Here. For the record, Mr. Welch and Ms. Towner indicated they would not be present this evening. Recognitions.
Good evening, our board members. Please help us congratulate the outstanding job the FCCLA students did at State. Amaya Jackson earned a bronze medal in the fashion and pearl display category. Laura Hans earned a silver medal in frosted cakes level three. Isabel Morrissey earned a gold medal in frosted cakes. And Sophia Richter earned a gold medal in frosted cakes, but also most outstanding in State for her category. FCCLA is coached by Ms. Patty Farley and Ms. Bridget Wilmot. And let's give it up for her, please. When I say your name, please come on up and receive your certificate. Amaya Jackson. Laura Hans, Laura. Isabel Morrissey. Isabel, excuse me, Isabel Morrissey. Sophia Richter. Come on up, Sophia.
Someone get a picture? No, just want to make sure someone got a picture, that's all.
And now for our next recognition, I would like to introduce the executive director of Ladsy, Ms. Ellie Anbill.
Hi, Ellen. Thank you for having us here tonight. I am here on behalf of the assistive technology team of Ladsy. The assistive technology team helps students across our cooperative access education through technology, which might mean computers or iPads, but it also might mean switches, or it might mean different software that can access different programs. They do a world of different things. We have teachers, speech-language pathologists, and occupational therapists, and even support from physical therapists on our team to help different students. And about five years ago, the team approached me and said, "We really would like to start honoring our kids that have done such amazing work in improving in their skills and their access to education through assistive technology," or AT we call it for short. "And we'd like to create an award. Can we do something called the Empowered by AT Award and honor kids that have really done a great job, that teams and their families have really come together to support the kids?" And so we did, and we started honoring kids going to school board meetings and presenting to the resident district of the students. Some of the students attend school at the resident district somewhere in Ladsy programs. It's been an amazingly positive experience for everybody involved and just a great brainchild of the AT team. And so tonight, we're making a round to Riverside Brookfield to honor our very special student, Ethan Tukalik. And we have Ethan's family and a number of his team members here tonight. We have a short video to present to the board just highlighting Ethan's amazing accomplishments that he's done over the many years that he's been at RB. And then we'll have a certificate to award to Ethan and to his team members at the end.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Do we need the lights dimmed off?
Claire, can you turn the lights off maybe by then?
Thank you.
Ethan began his technology journey in second grade when teachers would take his worksheets, put them on the copy machine, and scan them into his computer so that he could type in his answers. He has progressed to using an iPad for writing as well as to bank his voice for future use. He is also using a microphone currently to project his voice. As you can see, the possibilities are endless. And Ethan, we have some people who would love to congratulate you.
Hey, Ethan, congratulations on winning the assistive technology award. How exciting. You are so awesome. I'm so proud of you. You truly deserve this award and recognition for all the hard work that you've been putting in over the years. I'm very lucky that I have had the opportunity to work with you in the past five years at RB and in the transition program. You're just so remarkable, and you make such an impact on so many lives, mine included. So I really thank you for that. When I think of you and I think of ways to describe you, so many words come to my mind. One that stands out in particular is the word tenacity. And I say that because you're a very courageous and determined individual who never gives up on your goals, and I think that's just super impressive. And I've been able to see that when we work together for speech, especially when it comes to assistive technology, whether that's showing me the new features on your wheelchair or that's using your iPad and the several apps that we use, the head tracking, the eye gaze, using your different keyboards, using the switches to read. All of the above, you're able to just master, and it's so impressive. And it's really, really impressive that even if something's more challenging than something else, you put your mind to it and you get it done. And I'm just continually impressed by your skill and your tenacity. So I'm very proud of you, Ethan. I'm very lucky to work with you, and a huge congratulations again. Way to go, bud.
Hi, Ethan. I wanted to say congratulations on the award you're receiving this evening. You're so very well-deserving. I am Mary Dumas, and I'm Ethan's nurse. I've been working with you day to day since November 2020. So it's been quite the pleasure to get to know you. And I wanted to let you know that you are such a warm, generous, kind-hearted, and thoughtful young man. You are very insightful, and you can tell when someone needs a little pick-me-up in their day that they're kind of having a rough day. And so you'll crack a joke, make them smile, and I think that's such a beautiful quality. Thank you for always being considerate of others. That is just a beautiful gift. As far as your tech ability, I will tell you that you are quite proficient with your iPad and your Chromebook. You navigate very well. You definitely taught me things, so I appreciate that. And you work with your power chair quite masterfully, along with getting to use the microphone that has been added this year. I think that that's been great for us to be able to hear you loud and clear. I wanted to also note that your DJing ability is very well-appreciated in the program. I think if you are not there, they're quite sad that they don't have their lunchtime DJ because of your expansive knowledge, not only of songs and groups, but knowing all the words to the songs, which is amazing to me. I also will compliment you on your ability to be such a hard worker. You rarely, if ever, give up on a task. Sometimes it's quite tough because you can be tired or you can be worn out, and you will kind of take a pause. But you know what? You will get right back in there and finish it off. It's a delight working with you, and I wish you all of the best. Congratulations.
I am so excited to say congratulations to Ethan on this award for assistive technology. I have the pleasure of working with Ethan in the transition program to help him explore and learn ways that he can use his technology outside of the high school environment and in different places in the community and work and beyond. We have already seen Ethan utilize some of his iPad technology to participate in activities at the local library and start exploring ways that we can use that to help him look at opportunities for employment or volunteering in the future, and that's super exciting. Ethan is a great advocate for himself and just a delight to be a part of the transition program. He really personifies the idea of putting your all into something and trying something, even if it's difficult for you. And that really just brings, you know, a smile to my face and warm people's hearts to see how much he really puts an effort into things when they are difficult and does it all with a smile on his face. So I'm super excited that he's gotten this award. Congratulations, Ethan. Keep up the good work.
Hi, Ethan. Ms. Anderson here. I first just want to congratulate you on this amazing award that you are receiving tonight. I cannot think of a better person who is more deserving than you, my friend. I have watched you grow and develop into a wonderful young man over these past five years. You have become my friend and a person that I can count on to always make my day whenever I see you. And I think I speak for everyone when I say that you really have a way to light up the room. You use your assistive tech in ways that I have not seen other students use because you have really learned to own that, those tools that you've received, and you made them a part of you. And so the best part is whenever I hear you in the hallway, you've got that microphone on, and I mean, I can hear you, and I love it all the time. You are a wonderful human being, a wonderful person, and I am just so honored to be able to congratulate you tonight for earning this award. You are fantastic, and I can't wait to congratulate you in person. So congratulations, Ethan Tukalik. You did it, my friend.
Hello, my name is Sarah Sullivan. I'm the occupational therapist that's had the pleasure to work with Ethan Tukalik and his family for a number of years here at Riverside Brookfield High School. It's my pleasure to share with you the three top reasons, in my opinion, why Ethan is most deserving of this award. Number one, Ethan strives to communicate with others and is highly interactive with others, and this is really important to him and helps him throughout his day maintaining a sense of humor, his interactions and connections with others. Number two, Ethan is astutely aware of his abilities and his challenges. And with this being the case, he also wants to maintain his level of participation in interactions with others. So anytime that we can recognize this in him and provide him with the tools and strategies to promote his abilities that he continues to maintain, I think that's very important. And last but not least, Ethan refuses to give up. He's a fighter, and he is always open to try new things, weighing the pros and cons, and having an equal vested voice and interest in the outcomes of trials of different tools and strategies that we try to implement in his transition programming. So once again, it's a pleasure to work with Ethan and to nominate him for this award.
Ethan, it has been such a joy working with you and getting to know you over the past few years. You are friendly, caring, polite, and have a great sense of humor. I appreciate it when you use your iPad during physical therapy to choose a workout program. And I love how you make our PT time fun by adding cool music to our sessions. You do have great taste in music. I also want to say how proud I am of how you utilize your wheelchair's features, especially the seat elevation feature. You can independently turn off the lights by raising your seat to reach the light switch. I was also informed that you use this feature at Target to reach the bag of chips you wanted, which were on the top shelf. Way to go. Ethan, congratulations on your award. It is well-deserved.
Hey, Ethan, it's Ms. Marquez and Mr. Z. We just wanted to hop on here to congratulate you on receiving this amazing award. We are so proud of you, and we are so thankful for the time that we've got to spend with you, working with you. There's never a dull moment with you. You make us laugh. Your good humor, your sarcasm, how would we get through our days without it? And when we think of you, Ethan, the word that comes to mind is perseverance. You face everything head-on. You handle things with grace, again with your humor, and we really, really appreciate that about you. We're so proud of you.
Yes, we are definitely proud of you. I agree with everything that Ms. Marquez said, Ethan. We are very grateful that you do an amazing job communicating with your microphone as well. We want to let you know that. And we really appreciate our time with you, with Ms. Marquez last year and myself this year. Oftentimes in what we do, Ethan, not many students ask us or take a moment to ask us how we're doing. We are always the ones that are asking that question to students and that to support them. And every time that at least I meet with you, and I know Ms. Marquez has mentioned the past two, before our session ends, you always ask us, "How are you? How is life going?" And then specifically, you always ask me how my wife is doing too. So I really appreciate that because we need that out sometimes too. So thank you for that, Ethan. We're really blessed to have you around us and get to know you and then that we get to spend time with you, sometimes multiple times a week, but at least once a week. So we're very proud of you for this award. It's very deserving. And yeah.
We're so proud of you, Ethan. Congratulations. Bye.
Ellie, will Ethan be able to come up and receive the certificate? Okay, Kevin, do you want to come up also?
We'll be presenting Ethan. Ethan, you get two certificates. You get one from the school and the district and another one from Ladsy. We're proud of you. Come on up, bud. Come get your certificates.
Thank you, Ethan. Congratulations.
I've got one more. I just saw this young lady walking, Amaya Jackson. Come on, you know you got a lot of work. Come on up.
Amaya was for the FCCLA, right?
FCCLA, okay.
Yeah, for FCCLA.
Okay. Can you tell us which category, Dr. Freitas?
Fashion apparel display category.
That's right.
She won the bronze medal.
Awesome. Thank you.
And that concludes recognition.
Thank you to Ladsy and the whole team. That was really wonderful to see the heartfelt comments for a student. And thank you to the FCCLA team. Couldn't get that out, but thank you.
We have a short student association report, and then usually that's when kind of everybody makes a run for the exit. So if you don't mind, just give us five more minutes. I know our student association likes to present, and we like to make sure that parents and students that attend can hear what's going on before they step out.
Okay. Well, there's no talking what just came ahead of us. So we'll just try our best to sound at least a little bit as good. My name is Amanda. I'm a senior this year. I'm president of SA. Well, not for much longer, but that's what I am right now.
I'm Addison. I'm also a senior, and I'm the vice president.
I'm Nicole. I'm a senior, and I'm the director of communications.
I'm Ella. I'm a junior, and I'm the student spokesperson.
I'm so excited to be able to talk to you guys today. We are a little bit sad because this is our last one, so...
You're not going to come in May after you graduate?
No, I'm not supposed to. Yes, Nicole's going to start us off.
All right, so I'm not sure if you guys know, but this Friday is prom for our juniors and seniors. So as SA, we wanted to get people excited for the prom week coming up, including the underclassmen, even though they're not going. So we planned a spring spirit week for this week, so that's what's happening at RB right now. We have a spirit theme for every day this week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And to get that spirit week, we wanted to do something different because SA always picks our themes, but we wanted to get feedback from the rest of the school to see what most people would participate in. So we sent out a school-wide survey and actually picked two of our themes from the feedback we got from the entire school. And then tomorrow, Triumph is running a talent show, so that's going on. And then Friday is our dance.
What are the themes? What do people pick?
Okay, so Monday was...
Chocolate.
Tropical day. So, okay. Today, we actually did one. So it kind of came from like social media, we think. It's like a trending theme right now. So it was actually barbecue, like dad, mom versus soccer mom, dad. So people were dressed up kind of... Amanda was dressed up like Adam Sandler today.
I know, but he's a barbecue dad, so...
So that was today. And then tomorrow's actually a national like holiday. It's National Denim Day, which supports awareness for sexual assault. So tomorrow's denim day here. And then Thursday, we're doing Zoom Day, which is like pajamas, but like nice on the top, pajamas on the bottom, something like that to ease us into the fancy day the next day.
Those are fun.
Yes. And with National Denim Day being tomorrow, like Nicole just said, AST and Girl Up are also pairing up with SA. We're partnering up to provide the school with denim day. So it's such a success.
And then moving on to pop tops. Right now, we're having our pop top collection. We do this annually. We really enjoy it.
She's got the pop tops. We'll take them for you for church meeting.
All of the pop tops will go towards the Ronald McDonald House, and they use that to help fund for housing and for all the families that stay over there. We currently have, I believe, 47,000 pop tops saved. We're hoping to get 100,000 by the end of the week. We think it's very possible with all the seniors, they're saving up their pop tops and the bag over there. And yeah, and there's also a competition going on. So there'll be winners in every grade level.
And we've been announcing like, oh, seniors are in the lead. Oh, freshmen are in the place, like stuff like that to hopefully get people to get excited, maybe turn some more in. I know a lot of seniors are planning on turning them in like in the next few days because they save them up all four years to try and win. So, but I was not the smartest. I turned mine in last year, and I won for the junior class, and I'm kind of upset that I did that. But it's okay, I'll get over it.
High school's about learning.
Yes.
And then moving on to the blood drive this year. I mentioned last time, but we are doing three blood drives this year. So our next one will be on May 13th. It's going to be, look a little different than the past blood drives. There's going to be two mobile trucks outside, and they're doing two donors per every 15 minutes. So we're hoping we're going to get around 30, maybe some more donors. And we're opening that up to the whole school and also some outside community members, I believe, as well. We know some of the seniors did not get to donate last time, so we want to do one last for the seniors who are unable to donate and also the sophomores who have just now turned 16 are able to donate. So we're excited about that. It's happening soon.
Yes. And I feel like at this point, at least we can, as an exec board, maybe take a deep breath. I don't know if you guys can too yet or well, but with the end of the school year coming up, even though it's kind of stressful right now, it's still like, okay, we've made it here. So coming up for seniors is actually Senior Sunrise slash like Senior Decision Day. We decided to make that May 20th. This is a newer tradition that has been started in the past few years at RB. On May 20th, we're not sure what exact time we'll have everyone come here, but the seniors will meet in the back parking lot in the school lot and almost have like a tailgate, but with like donuts and stuff because it's going to be the morning.
Coffee, orange juice.
Coffee, stuff like that.
Right. Good.
And everyone's going to be wearing this shirt. We have, if you're going to college, you can rock your college shirt. If you're planning on joining the military, you can wear a shirt for that or whatever you're planning on doing, just maybe like get a shirt that represents that. And so we're excited to see... We're excited to see everybody in their new... And what they're planning on doing next year, basically. I just don't know what time we're going to make it because what time are people actually going to want to get here that early? But it is May 20th on a Friday. So hopefully if we make it like around 7:00 AM, we'll get a good turnout. And then last time we talked to you guys, we told you about how our officer, like elections had just begun or they're about to start. So they're already in the process. They're pretty much almost done with that process. We had it on the announcements where we were like, "If you want to become a class officer, like come to our next SA meeting. We're going to give you a packet, and you can just fill it out, get it done. And then if you're running contested, then we'll do the voting and stuff like that." We had a pretty good turnout this year. Same with exec board. We gave out a few packets for that as well. Tomorrow, we are doing voting because there's a few different positions that are being contested. So online voting will be set out in the morning to individual like grade levels for them to vote for that. Luckily, the executive board has known is contested, so everyone who ran is being placed on the exec board for next year, which is really exciting, and that's kind of nice for them because that takes a little bit of stress out of it.
It's a really good group of people, too.
Yes, we are so excited for you guys to meet them. They are awesome people. And we wanted to announce them today, but we haven't like done the official stuff for them yet, so we can't do it just yet. So you guys have to wait a little bit. I'm sorry. I don't want her to feel any...
So you'll be there.
Not me, but they will be.
Okay.
So with that, I can introduce you unofficially to our next year's president, Ella. She's right here, so a little round of applause to Ella.
Congratulations, Ella.
So yeah, I'm going to be the president of the student association exec board next year, and I'm super excited to continue to be on the board. And we have already started planning freshman orientation and brainstorming a few things for homecoming. So I'm super excited about that. And on a completely different note, last Friday was the Day of Silence, and that's a national day of action to spread awareness about the effects of the bullying and harassment of the LGBTQ community. And students heard announcements and had opportunities at lunch to write staff members a thank you for supporting all students and being inclusive.
That's kind of it for what we have for you guys today. Again, we wanted to just say thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you guys all year. We have grown so much from getting to know all of you and being put in this position to practice public speaking. Maybe not succeed the best, but just practice.
Thank you to you and all your colleagues. I know the whole board isn't here for all your service. It's a big commitment, your senior year, to spend time doing all the activities and then coming to the board once a month with updates. We appreciate it. And to unofficial president for next year, congratulations. We look forward to everything that you're going to be working on.
The SA is truly the backbone of the school spirit of everything that goes on at the school. So for you and all your classmates that are in officers, just being involved, right? It's no different than trying to get involved in your community when you become, leave, come back from college or start your careers, giving back to society, giving back to your community, and giving back to the school. So congratulations to all of you. We wish you nothing but the best in college or wherever you're going to go after graduation. And you're welcome to come and speak at these board meetings anytime. Okay?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, parents, if you want to make your way to the exit, now would be a good time, unless you're planning on staying.
Thank you.
I would think that would be pressurized, right? There you go. We're going to move on to, as everyone filters out of the room, we'll move on to visitor comments in a second. If anyone is here for visitor comments, you can come on up to the table. There's no particular order. I think there's probably a few people here, it looks like. If you could just announce your name and provide your comments, and Dr. Skinkis will time your presentation.
Ladies, I'll just put my hand up when you get to like 30 seconds left, okay? Don't worry about that. You focus on what you want to share with the board. All right?
Hello, my name is Olivia Bushio, and I'm a member of Magical Singers. Choirs had a positive effect on many things in my life, but one of the most significant is my mental health. Due to my mental health issues, I've lost interest in many things that used to bring me joy, such as softball, visual arts, running, sewing, and even certain school subjects. But the one thing that has brought me consistent joy is music, and I know of several other choir members who feel the same. Music is one of the only consistent sources of happiness in my life, and choir is a huge part of that. Choir is a safe and consistent place for everyone, especially its members, to be themselves and feel accepted. Getting rid of any choirs, let alone the entire program, would take away those feelings of safety and acceptance in so many students' lives, leaving them feeling unsupported and underappreciated. Finally, I'd like to invite you to our concert on May 4th so that you can see how much the arts mean to us and how invested we are in this program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, all. I'm Rachel Watson, and I'm here to address concern for the music department. This music program means so much to me, along with my peers. Music has been the most important... Music has been the most important aspect of my life since I can remember. In fact, I recently stopped participating in everything except the fine arts. The fact that everything is up in the air right now is severely affecting our in-class dynamic and environment as a whole. I'm a member of Madrigals, and the fact that we have three choirs at RB is immensely important to the development of aspiring musicians. Hypothetically, to cut down the two choirs would be a disservice to every student here. Inconsistency does not have a place in music. We are high school students, and we feel like we're carrying the fate of the music program on our backs. I put so much into this department, and I will not stand by and watch it fall apart. Additionally, going through two choir directors in tears is enough, but the possibility that there might be a third truly reflects the soundness of the administration and their belief in their music students. We consistently feel undersupervised in comparison to the athletic departments. We love you, we care about you, we have your back, but the perception is not one administrator has our backs because we're not athletes. Our parents are taxpayers, too. And respectfully, the lack of support for the music department needs to come to an end. Our students and teachers should not fight the same battle every year. On behalf of my peers that couldn't be here tonight, we ask that you please reflect on everything said today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Veronica Hunt. I'm a junior here at RB, and I have been involved with the music program since my freshman year. Each year, I have taken both choir and band. Without the music program, my high school experience would have been completely different. Last year was a struggle to take music classes online, but I persevered due to my passion for music. But for some students, taking music over a Zoom call wasn't worth it, especially for freshmen and middle school students coming, especially for freshmen and middle school students coming to RB. So the enrollment is down. Also, fine art survey being removed as a requirement added to the decline in music enrollment. But the enrollment can work its way up as new students who never experienced music and remote learning come into RB with a new enthusiasm for music. But in order to see an increase in RB music students, we need to keep our teachers and classes consistent. I will be honest, at the beginning of this year, I was not very open-minded about getting a new choir director, but Ms. Matana proved me wrong. She is not only supportive and enthusiastic, but she is a wonderful educator. And it would be a disservice to the community if she were to go after not being offered a salary with benefits that she can live off of. I would like to add that she has said nothing to me about this situation, and I am bringing this up to the board on my own accord. It is also a big gamble if RB was to have to look for a new choir teacher again, because even though there is no intention to remove choir classes, they could not be taught if there are no teachers. Not to mention that Ms. Matana has a plan for how to improve the RB choir program specifically after the pandemic, and losing her would result in a reset of the wonderful progress we have made this year in resuming choral learning after going remote. Also, within her first semester, she revived the a cappella group, where she has taught music students a cappella techniques, something that wasn't available before she came to RB. She has a lot of experience from her time in one of UIUC's a cappella groups, and it would be very difficult to find someone willing and qualified to supervise that group, which has been very successful and even drew in some students not enrolled in an RB choir class. We need to keep Ms. Matana as a teacher at RB and offer her at least a position of point eight or above. The future of RB choirs depend on it. Also, the community does love the RB music program. I called my neighbor Nancy Dvorak today to ask for her permission to mention her name tonight. She's a member of the community that often comes to RB music concerts, even without having any family of hers enrolled in the program. She is not the only one who finds joy from the RB music department, and not protecting its future would be a disservice to the community. Overall, Ms. Matana needs to stay for the future and current students of the RB choir program, and not giving her a position of point eight or higher would be unreasonable and could destroy the future of the RB choirs. Thank you for your time.
Good job, ladies.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Liz Bushio. I sent you all an email very late last night, and I initially was gonna come and read that, but you all can read yourselves, and the girls made a lot of the points that I wanted to make. And I guess I just wanna reiterate and maybe emphasize a few points. One is that a school like Hauser with six hundred students, less than six hundred students, has four full-time music teachers. Their music classes are not required, they're all elective, and they've got four full-time teachers for this. So for a school of sixteen hundred students, I realize it's enrollment-driven, but with the way COVID hit us, you can't sing online. It was such a struggle last year, listening to my daughters trying to sing and make music online. It was really hard. We lost a lot of kids because of that. So I'm just really asking, please, fund three full-time positions. Give them a chance to build this program back again. Because I think they can. One of the things that really could have built enrollment and didn't, there's usually a fall choir festival, and all the middle school kids come here, and they sing the entire day. It's a field trip for them with all the choirs here. And at the end of the day, they go home, they prepare, they come back for a concert that night. All the middle schools perform, the high school performs, it gets them so jazzed. That didn't happen this year because the theater schools had field trip restrictions and couldn't come. So that, I think, was a big hit for the choir program. And I was gonna talk about a cappella, but Veronica did that really, really well. So I'm just really asking, please, let us recover from COVID. Let us build this program back up, and to do that, we need the teachers, we need the time. So thank you for your consideration, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi. I don't have anything prepared, so I'm just gonna speak off the cuff because this is an important issue to me. My name is Melanie Strube. I have a daughter Caroline, who is a sophomore here. And my next-in-line older daughter, Sarah Strube, was also a student here. She's now a sophomore in college, but was also involved in the music program. And I just wanna bring a little bit of a different perspective. So both Sarah and Caroline, as opposed to most of the people, I think, that come into the music department who are focused on just the arts, they are both athletes and they are involved in the arts. And so I see from both perspectives, they're both varsity swimmers from high school, how, you know, the time and talent is devoted to the sports programs, but also to the music programs. And I think that's one of the most wonderful things about this school, is that you can be a varsity athlete and you can still be involved in the music programs. We were also quite concerned when Ms. Prince left because she had done a wonderful job of being very involved in the music program, doing great musicals, doing the band music and orchestra trips, which my older daughter had participated in. And looking back, all of her friends really came from that music department. She was also in marching band for four years. So again, we were a little skeptical when we had this new younger teacher coming in and just were wondering what it would be like. And I cannot tell you, it has been the most positive, wonderful experience to have Ms. Matana here. I do not know her very well. I got to know her recently when I went on a trip to Moulin Rouge, when all the music departments went downtown and watched a show and went out to dinner. The way that she just fits in with everybody here is just amazing. The fact that she was able to start an a cappella group that has, I think, more kids than even some of the choirs have. I've heard them talk about possibly bringing in a show choir. They did a fantastic performance of Chicago that my daughter was lucky to be able to be in. And I think it would be a real disservice to not give her at least another year or two to have an opportunity to grow the program when we've been dealing with COVID. She is such a wonderful asset, and it would be a real shame to lose her to another school district for that reason. She has a lot of great ideas, and my daughter also recently had two surgeries and has been unable to do her sport recently. It's the first time in, probably since she's been six years old, that she hasn't been able to do the athletic part of what she normally does. And music has absolutely been a lifesaver for her, for her mental health, to have something to fall back on and to really have everybody just come together and support her. And it's allowed her to do things like participate in the talent show tomorrow because she can't go back in the water and go swimming. So it's been extremely important to her mental health to be able to have the music program and those friends. And I fear that if Ms. Matana were not given enough, I don't know if it's credits or however you call it, but I fear that she would be forced to look for a job elsewhere to be able to support herself, and we would be losing a wonderful person, and it would be very sad for our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Janudas. You guys have seen me here before. I'm just gonna reiterate what everyone else has been saying about the music department. I know we're talking about enrollment numbers, but I do wanna bring up that my son was an incoming freshman. He was one of five kids that decided to take a leap and go into choir this year. And we are now like at least doubling those numbers. I heard we have seventy-five kids signed up for next year in the music department. So that is a big jump. It's probably not what we had in the past, but we are working to build those numbers up again. And so I am asking, we'd love a full-time music choir director. We'd love Mr. Loeb to stay on, we'd love Mr. Baum. We'd like all three of them as full-time teachers. And if we could find some way to keep all three of them happy, I know that this sharing with D96 threw a wrench into our plans for, you know, this year, but if we could look somewhere, find some way to fund three teachers, we would love it.
Thank you.
Any additional? Okay.
Hi, my name is Andrew Ostel. I have nothing prepared, my wife does. She was not able to make it this evening, so she has put me on the hot seat. Music education contributes to a well-rounded education. When combined with other subjects, music builds self-esteem and essential skills. According to the New England Board of Higher Education, music education in high schools can have major impacts on growth and development, helping prepare students for their future endeavors. Areas such as enhanced language capabilities, improved memory, strengthened hand-eye coordination, powerful study habits, teamwork, and heightened mental processing, problem-solving abilities are all benefits of music education. Personally, we've seen how choral music at RB has developed a sense of teamwork in our daughter, a junior in the Madrigals program. She works daily with her fellow choir members to create a cohesive, technically correct performance time after time. What better practice for life? To learn how to work together with a large group of people for one common goal. The choral music program at RB has been a place for our daughter to find a sense of belonging. She's made friends through her choir experiences and has seen her self-confidence grow and flourish through these experiences. She would add that she is not alone in feeling a sense of belonging in the choral music program at RB. Many peers who are interested in music, but perhaps do not play an instrument, can have, can and have found their place in the variety of choirs offered here at RB. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've got everyone covered for public comment. Thank you all for coming out this evening.
Students, you did a nice job.
Any discussion information items from the board that you'd like to add? Looking to my right, looking to my left. Report from Board of President. I don't have any reports for this evening. Dr. Skinkis, do you have any reports this evening?
Just a general update, the collective negotiations are ongoing. The District and the RBA completed a full-day session of bargaining on Thursday, April 21st. There are two additional full-day sessions scheduled for the month of May. The current collective bargaining agreement expires on June 30th of this month, of this year. So we'll have more discussions about that in closed session. The District will receive a one-time payment from the state. We're not sure when we will receive that payment, but approximately nineteen thousand dollars due to a coding error that occurred during the initial implementation of the evidence-based funding formula in the spring of 2018. That's gained some traction in local media, sources of Tribune, Sun Times, et cetera, because the CPS school system received about eighty-seven million, more than what they were supposed to. So there's a list throughout the state of schools that that money would be used. So they're trying to get CPS to pay that money back and then redistribute it to the schools who didn't get their full amount. Dr. Matana has started to develop the budget for FY23. She will provide regular updates to the board, education throughout the next few months. The goal is to have the board approve a tentative budget at the June meeting so that we can start the school year with budgetary items in place. And then the board will continue to work throughout July and August to finalize a formal budget in September. The Student Advisors to the Board of Education application window for the 22-23 school year has closed. Six students have submitted applications for consideration. And I will work with Dr. Freitas, Mr. Van Hurst, Mrs. Gasko to schedule the interviews. We'll also use feedback that we receive from our student advisors on their exit survey to help us in the selection process. Superintendent Advisory Councils, there are no new updates for any of my advisory councils because the majority of our time has been kind of focused on collective bargaining with the teachers. So that is the superintendent's report for tonight.
Quick question of clarification. The funding from the state, is that contingent on CPS paying back, or is that gonna come separately? Do we know?
I believe they passed a amendment in Springfield before they closed the spring legislative session. And we're supposed to receive the payment upfront in one of our EBF payments.
So this fiscal year is the assumption? Okay.
Suppose and receive are, you know, in hand, and so I'm not holding my breath, but it would be an additional nineteen thousand.
I just wanted to put, it's not money we have in hand for this year's budget, just to be.
Correct.
Clear on that, and hopefully it will be in next year, or as soon as possible.
So does that mean if we don't get it by June 30th, it counts for next year?
That would be accurate, unless the auditor makes us reconcile that or, I'm forgetting the word off the top of my head, but.
Make a correction?
Correction.
They've never done that, I've not been able to do that.
Well, they do in the audit.
Okay, okay.
When we get our tax payments after June 30th.
Oh, okay.
They make us put it. Unless it's a term.
Accrue.
Accrue. They make us accrue that to the prior year because it was technically money from the prior year.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Skinkis? Anyone else? No? Dr. Matana?
Good evening. Tonight, I'll provide financial information for the month of March, which represents seventy-five percent of our financial year. On Board Book page eight, begins the monthly summary report. You'll see the total operating revenue for the month was eight million, five hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars. Ninety-five percent of that coming from property tax and two percent coming from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding. That's our regular monthly state funding that we receive. On the next page, the fund balance summary shows that the District is currently operating with a surplus in its operating funds from this fiscal year because we just received that huge payment of property tax, which will then be spent down for the remainder of the fiscal year. On Board Book page 10, the next page, the summary of revenue shows that the District has received ninety-four point seven percent of our budgeted revenue for the year. This amount is higher than this time last fiscal year, which was about ninety-one point six percent, due to the timing of property tax. To date, the District has received ninety-seven point nine eight percent of our budgeted property tax amount for both fall and spring collections combined. The amount that the District has yet to receive or that we're chasing compared to what we budgeted for is four hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. So that will trickle in mostly in April, hopefully, but then also probably a little bit into May as well. Just to provide an update to the board, we also, when we're looking at budgeted property tax, we look at what we budgeted for refunds as well. And that is currently under budget by a hundred and sixty. by $164,429. So this is currently, that's money that we anticipated losing due to property tax refunds that we haven't lost yet. So that kind of helps offset some of the money that we're chasing on the revenue side of the property taxes. Cook County is also switching over to a new integrated property tax system, causing the fall collection to arrive as possibly as late as December of 2022, or some people are even thinking maybe January of 2023. I'll continue to watch the timing of this collection as well as our fund balance. You know, the, one of the main concerns is our debt service payment is due in December. And currently, we're able to operate for about six or seven months without receiving significant revenue. So this will be, this will be a significant cause for concern, but things could certainly change because it's, you know, we're several months away from that, but wanted to update the board on where we're at with that.
So Dr. Smatana, could I ask your indulgence at our next meeting or this report to be, provide a little more specificity on the number of months we could operate with our fund balance as is in the current budget? There was a fairly lengthy hearing that the county board did yesterday on the property tax collection, and unfortunately, there was no solution identified and the situation is fairly dire. So that December, January is looking quite realistic in terms of the property tax bill release. And I'm, you know, I think I speak for many of us, we're concerned about what our fund balance looks like. We keep a relatively healthy, we're at 48% fund balance?
Higher.
About 52.
Okay.
So I can, I can give you a little more color right now. A lot of this will depend on where we finish this fiscal year for our budget. We're anticipating if we got 100% of our revenue and 100% of our budgeted expenditures, this year we would have a surplus of $694,000. That's primarily due to the ARP-ESR funds that we received, which was a little over $1 million. And if we hit that mark, we will be at a 54.4% fund balance or percent as in operating expenditures if we don't include the $2.9 million in working cash. If we include that money to spend to help us get through this, we're a little over 60%. But the 54% translates to a little over six months. So it really is going to be dependent on how we finish this year. If we finish a little better this year financially, we'll have, you know, an extra month or two that we'll be able to operate.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. I just, I know I'm concerned. I think people, as taxpayers are concerned because having to pay your tax bills so late in the cycle before the next cycle is problematic. It's problematic for, Mr. Welch isn't here tonight, but for income tax purposes, right? It's, it's challenging in how you write that property tax, but for the taxing bodies and not just school boards, but fire protection districts and park districts and everyone else, it's really a challenging situation we're going to find ourselves in.
So worst-case scenario is we got until December, January, and until that money starts to trickle in, we could drain our fund balances, right?
Worst-case scenario is we would need to go and borrow money.
That's really the worst case to a tax anticipation loan.
Correct.
It's like a payday warrant, payday loan, which means you're paying like double the percent of interest to make payroll and keep the lights on and keep the gas.
And I know we've talked about it previously, but I think it's a topic that I would assume we want to keep abreast of at every meeting because it is so real to how we operate the rest of the budget.
I will certainly keep it on each month as we
Thank you.
Get closer and closer to finalizing this fiscal year.
Thank you.
The summary of expenditure shows that the district has spent 71% of the budgeted expenditures, which is exactly where we are tracking at this time last year. As always, I included for the board the statement of revenue and expenditures for the month of March for all of our board accounts, which compares budgets to actual amounts. And there were four questions submitted that I'd like to touch on. The first is on Board Book Page 14. Fine Arts Survey Supply is over budget because those items were supposed to be keyed to the Fine Arts Art Account, so they're off by one number. So we're doing a journal adjustment and that will be reflected in the next month's report. That's primarily what we use these reports for is to catch any errors like that. Board Book Page 16, PAPETS is over budget because we added another stipend this year after the season began due to participation numbers, which allowed them to create a JV level. So that was not budgeted for prior to the year.
So that, that's just going to come, that's just going to end up a little over then?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Likely will be under somewhere else and things
Yeah.
Likely balance. Board Book Page 16, Drivers Ed Repairs. They were things that we didn't foresee. Usually we budget $1,000 every year. We don't spend it. Drivers Ed as a whole will be under budget and stipends, and so that will wash out. Because it's a little over $1,000 in which we're over in that account. Staff Development, Bilingual Education, this is over budget, but we will be, get reimbursed from a grant. And the grant came in after the budget was complete, and so neither the revenue or the expenditure are captured in the budget currently. And then lastly, Board Book Page 19, Yes Technology Services is over budget and it looks really bad at 300%. Translates to like $4,000. But the way a lot of the departments work, especially technology works, is they look at their department budget as a whole because they estimate where things are going to come out of, whether it's supplies or repairs or paid services. But then, once the year gets going, needs kind of change. And so instead of making sure we meet all of the budget numbers, we make sure that we're meeting the right accounting standards and so we take them out of the right accounts. So when you look at the technology budget as a whole, it will be at or under the budget. And like I said, that's the approach that we take with all departments. I also included this month, as always, the Student Activity Summary account for the month of March. As you take a look at that, remember negative account balances on that report represent positive fund balances. And then I included a few additional informational items for you tonight. The first, I attached the invoice for the district's share of the operating expenditures for the Township Treasure. As many, many of you are aware, we are required to use the Township Treasure, so this is one of those unfunded mandates for us. So this invoice includes the financial software, Infinite Visions, that we transitioned to three years ago. And our portion is a little over 5% of operating costs, which translates to $63,786. This will be brought to the board for approval in May. Next, the district received our pooled investment earnings. Our investments are managed by the Township Treasure. They pool all of the money from the school districts that participate in the Township Treasure and then invest them together. And so this year, the district received $26,610. As you can see, this is significantly under budget and significantly less than what we received last year. Our investment period is March 1st through the end of February. So like I said, it's significantly under budget due to the current market, but we're hopeful that in the future, that will slowly start to increase. So we will be budgeting more conservatively for this next year. Evidence-based funding, Dr. Skinkis already touched on, so I will skip that one. And then lastly, I just wanted to follow up about the student that spoke at the board meeting, Thomas Dixon, regarding the use of salt on sidewalks and the surrounding area. I conferred with Aramark, which is the district's contracted service for buildings and grounds. And it was determined that the safest mitigation measure for ice and snow is to continue to use our environmentally friendly salt as sand doesn't melt the snow fast enough to make the sidewalks and parking lots safe, especially when our building is open at 6:00 AM and we need to make sure that it's safe for anybody who comes in throughout the day. The existing, I also shared with the student the existing and future green initiatives that the district is planning on taking, as well as encouraged him to provide feedback on those with me or sit down and have a conversation if he had other suggestions. But unfortunately, we were not, we didn't feel comfortable switching over to sand.
Thanks for the comment on that. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Questions from anyone? No? I should have deferred to our board representatives, one of your last meetings. Any questions for Dr. Smatana or Dr. Skinkis? Okay.
Principal Report.
Thank you. Principal Report, yes.
Good evening again, honorable board members. So under Teaching and Learning, I'll present the four goals that was presented to the staff prior to the '21-'22 school year. The first goal was a simple one, to open for in-person learning. Can you believe it, about a year and a half, we were debating then the seriousness of that topic. And I'm proud to say that with the support of the board, superintendent, assistant superintendent, the staff, that we were able to open and the goal was met. Goal number two was that every bulldog would have formed at least one positive connection with a trusted adult. The goal is still in progress. In the fall, through a Google Form survey, an inquiry came from the board, what tool did I use? So from the Google Tool survey, 64% in the fall of the Bulldogs claimed to have formed one positive relationship. In the spring, that jumped to 87%. Big shout out to all the staff and everybody involved in being intentional in forming those relationships. Goal number three was to improve students' EF skills in effective planning, organization, decision-making, behavior, and time management. That goal is still in progress, that is measured every day in classrooms with teachers and students. And lastly, the goal, goal number four was to increase students from diverse backgrounds in AP courses by half a percent to percent annually. And I would, as I explained this data, I would like to respond to an inquiry by a fellow board member that inquired about the overall diverse makeup of AP scholars. So if we look at the 2021 school year, we have 568 AP scholars. This is not here, but I'll say it. Out of the 568 students, 213 were students of diverse backgrounds, black, Hispanic, Latino, multiracial, or Asian. So the makeup was 37.5%. If we look at the 21-22 school year, we have 597 AP scholars, 236 were from diverse backgrounds, which gave us a percentage of 39.5%. So we went up 2% in the overall diverse makeup of AP scholars. We had 23 more students from diverse backgrounds and overall an increase of 29 more AP students, which is a 4.8 increase. But I'm really proud to say that with the help of the staff, of the counseling, and everyone in the building, we are increasing our AP program once again and including students of diverse backgrounds. AP testing begins next week, May 2nd through May 13th. Good luck to all the Bulldogs. Summer school, academic opportunity athletics are up and running and they are available on our website. Make sure we sign up for a summer school opportunity and athletic offerings. School culture and operations, this is last week's data. A total of 340 students have taken at least one mental health day. 225 have taken one, 85 have taken two, 17 have taken three, nine have taken four, and four have taken five days. But there is a caveat, okay? There's not that many students that need support with mental health. What's come to me and, you know, by the conversation with parents is that students took senior, the traditional senior day has become mental health day, and that happened two weeks ago. As it is, it is happening, you know, people are communicating with that. Again, we encourage those days to be taken when it is serious, when it is a mental crisis, not just because, again, right, for the first one, you know, I really, we don't ask questions, right? You have a mental health day. My daughter, my daughter's son is a mental health day. Thank you very much. And after the second one, then we engage with the counseling and we provide services or look for services. But again, just to let the board know, you know, we do not have that many students in crisis. People have found a way to use that for their own, for their own situation. Activities and athletics, as you heard earlier, prom is this Friday from 6:00 to 10:00. Students, make sure you get there on time. The RB Talent Show is tomorrow. We have the Band and Orchestra Spring Concert on Thursday evening. Graduation, Friday, May 27th at 6:30 in the RB Auditorium. We're back indoors. I know people approach Dr. Freitas, we like being outdoors, because outdoors is too unpredictable. The weather, the wind, who knows what can happen. We're back indoors. Students will get four tickets for the main area, the auditorium, and then we have two tickets for the overflow rooms.
The gymnasium and then the auditorium.
The gymnasium, the auditorium, Little Theater are the overflow rooms. The Apollo Awards, an old big one for the music community, is Thursday, May 12th from 7:00 to 8:30 at the RB Auditorium. And I've also linked a variety of end-of-the-year events that we have coming up. Cap and gown pickup, the senior barbecue rehearsal. So we are planned and ready to go to end the school year on a positive note. And that concludes my principal's report.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? No? Thank you very much. Student advisors, nearing the end of your service as well.
Yeah, so I just had a couple of things today. We have a big couple of weeks coming up. This week is a big week for music department and then we have prom. So this Wednesday, being tomorrow, there is also a badminton fundraiser. If you didn't know, I play on the varsity badminton team. So it is our Playa fundraiser tomorrow, and you can pay $5 to play any member of the badminton team, $10 for staff members or you guys, and you get a free t-shirt. Also tomorrow is the RB's Got Talent. And we have a great mix of talents, musical, dancing, a variety of things, and all proceeds from that event will go to the Ukrainian Relief Fund. So that's our annual service. We do a lot of service, but that's our annual big servicing and all of that usually goes to a music charity, but we found it appropriate this year to send that over to the Ukrainian Relief Fund. Thursday, we have the RB Spring Band and Orchestra Concert. This is one of the last for our seniors and as a lot of these lovely people have said today, music has really made my four years. So I would encourage anyone here and any of the community members watching to come out and see what we're all about and why we fight so hard for the things we love. Friday's prom, I hope everyone has a great, safe time. Crossing our fingers doesn't rain, it's looking a little cold, so hopefully we get some sun for pictures, but good luck to everybody with that. And AP tests are coming up next week. I know after prom, the Monday morning GOV exam is going to be a little rough, but.
We had nothing to do with that.
Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll get through it. Good luck to everybody. Trust yourself, trust that you studied, and thank you to all the AP teachers who have done an amazing job preparing us. And as we start finalizing our next steps for this year, thank you to anyone who's had a positive impact on our four years at RB.
Thank you.
I'd like to add on and reiterate what Claire said. As we're ending the year, I think seniors are just in the mindset of like prom and graduation and finishing their year off strong as like, I know, that's what my mentality is right now. So I was really going to touch on what Claire said about the AP tests. I really wanted to express my gratitude for the teachers. They've been really helpful in preparing for the AP tests and hosting review sessions in the morning and studying, providing review materials for studying at home on your own too. So that's been really helpful and that's all I have.
Thank you. And you have one more meeting with us, correct?
I think two.
Two more meetings. Okay, just wanted to make sure we weren't saying goodbye officially yet. Want to miss that from the agenda, I'm just kidding.
I think three, actually, if we're.
You're good at the make-up.
Okay.
We have two, yes. Your last one is a make-up.
Don't come back after graduation. That's, I think, the lesson we've learned today. Old business, moving on to life safety, capital, sustainability items.
No updates at this time. Kristin, or excuse me, Dr. Smatana and Berm, our facilities manager, are working on a report to wrap up our life safety. All of our life safety items, we'll have a facility advisory before the July board meeting. And we'll have a report for the board as well at the July board meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then let's move on to the district goal discussion, if we could.
So we did receive some feedback from Board Member Heruska on the goals I shared with the board. So I would say that explore how to maximize curricular days to foster academic rigor, new opportunities, and social-emotional supports for all students. So that is the board goal. It's a very, it's a broad goal. So for our focus for the '22-'23 school year, from Dr. Freitas and the building administrative team, is based on some of the feedback they received from the board as well as during their presentation during the MTSS presentation on our multi-tiered system of supports. The idea was to establish a dashboard. I think Ms. Heruska, based on some of the comments you sent in, I think you're thinking like the dashboard we used to have where we tracked how many students, you know, were 21 or better on their ACT or something to compare to other schools. The dashboard that we're actually describing would be for each individual student and it'd be following their academic progress, their attendance progress, their behavior progress, and any SEL services needed or that they receive. So this builds off of that whole tiered system of supports to make sure that no one falls through the cracks and that students stay on track from the minute they come in as a freshman all the way through graduation. Now, something that Dr. Freitas and his team are still working on is identifying some of those instructional and academic programming. So we can, what we're going to be looking into is whether or not we will also be tracking with the students academic progresses, how they do on the PSAT eight when they take the entrance exam. the entrance exam through, when they take the SAT exam, as long as that's still offered by the state over the four years. But the first idea of this goal was to maximize, you know, to kind of create that social, those social emotional supports, but also identify any immediate curricular needs that need to be put in place for our students. And then to help make sure they stay on track for graduation, which is a school report card item, but also we're hoping that by tracking this data through this new panorama dashboard, would allow us to identify the second part of the board goal, which is the new opportunities for the curricular day. So this is, this is not, I think this is, I think you're thinking this is the dashboard for goal number one like we used to have. This is not that type of dashboard.
No, so this is exactly how I understood it. So this is very personal, you know, attuned to the students, and it's wonderful to have. But as a board, my only concern is, I think it's valuable, and I completely understood the way you wrote this as you explained it. But now as a board, how do we monitor overall that the school? Like when you go online and you look at any other of the competing high schools, you see that they have an academic rigor, that they're considered academically excellent. And, you know, there's the rankings, a new ranking just came out. We were not on that list, but some of our friends were. You know, and you can look at the different rankings. Does this kind of dashboard that the teachers will be using and families, I assume, will be using, because it's to their students? How does that evidence come out to an overarching? So if somebody's considering moving into the community, they want to say, is this high school academically rigorous? Is this gonna be a good high school? Is this gonna be a good high school for my kids? Does that make sense?
Yes, and I think that this goal would not be where they would be monitoring it. I think they would be monitoring that off of the school report card, based on how this goal was written from the board during their goal development session. The first phase or phase one, which is the twenty-two-twenty-three school year, was taking all that information that was shared that they would, the school psychologist and the suicide psychiatrist and Ms. Augustine and the social workers were talking about all the interventions that were put in place and how we're gonna be tracking this and making sure students don't regress, but actually continue to move forward. That's what this dashboard is. I don't think, I can't answer this question unless Dr. Freitas can. I don't think this, the panorama dashboard is necessarily something that goes to each individual parent. I think they have access to all that information through Skyward, but you would be more of the expert on that. I'm not sure if that, if that will be something that would be, that's not a public.
Right, but it's impersonal. It's by student, it's personal. It's not outward, it's not an outward facing to describe the school overall.
Yes, you are correct.
And that's how I understand it. And I think it's valuable. And so it's just a discussion for this board. I mean, we all pay high taxes. You know, tax time's coming. We do pay a fair share, and we know taxes drives house sales and everything else. But we also want to know that our school is academically rigorous, and we want to know that we're in a competitive school. And when our kids graduate, that when they go to college, they won't flunk out the first year. Are we going to get that information for the community somewhere else? Or if this is implemented, and I'm not saying this is a bad goal, I think it's wonderful, I hope we can have it. How are we still gonna get that information for our community to say, yes, we are an academically rigorous school?
So I guess my reaction to that is, what are you looking for that's not covered on the report card right now?
Well, we didn't make it, so, right, and if I look at how we show on the report card, we're not doing as well as we have been doing historically.
I mean, the report card's a fairly new measurement tool.
Right, but if I look over other, you know, public measures, do we need to say that it's a board goal that we want to be, to set a goal for the report card to hit a certain level? Because right now, we're under fifty percent of our students meeting, or, you know, meeting that college readiness. So that, you know, that just meeting college readiness means if you graduate here and go to college, you should be able to pass your classes. And fifty percent of our students have that expectation. That's not high. And that doesn't make me feel comfortable about that ten thousand dollar property tax bill.
Well, I think, you know, it's only reported each year, and this is gonna be our third or fourth year. This is only our third or fourth year on the SAT, and two of those years were with the pandemic.
Yeah, and so, and like I said, I'm not saying, and this is just part of the discussion for us to think about. I think this is wonderful, but somewhere, where do we ensure our community members that are paying these tax bills, that we do want to see that report card higher? And maybe if we're doing this, it will reflect better?
So I'm looking at the current report card, right? There's no data currently reported for college and career ready. So much of that was a pandemic issue, that's my understanding. So I'm not sure the source you're referencing on the fifty percent. So I'd be curious to see that. But I look at the other items on the report card. And again, I think taking your model of if I'm looking to purchase a home in the two-oh-eight district, I'm gonna pull up this report card and, you know, pull up something in Lagrange Park, and I'm gonna pull up something in Oak Park, or I'm gonna kind of look in the general western suburban area. And so you're gonna pull up these and compare them to others. You've got the ninth grade on track measurement, you've got a graduation rate, you have an early college coursework measurement. I'm just reading out the titles of the, you have the SAT scores, but there's, I think there were some, and I would defer to you, Dr. Skink, because I think there were some data points missing due to COVID.
Right. So what I would say to, I would, I would, I understand what you're saying, Ms. Heruska. What I would say to you is, you know, I'm assuming these board goals are gonna be around for a while. And so then year two, after this dashboard is implemented, that might be where we go with the twenty-three-twenty-four goal, is we want to see growth in freshmen on track or because of this dashboard that we created, and now that we are tracking our interventions and our student progress. And that's the idea, is that if we're building something, yeah, first idea was to create this dashboard to tie all these services we're providing and reporting out to board to one place to see the direct impact they're having on students' social emotional health, as well as academic and career readiness, you know, college career readiness, academic progress. So I would imagine that, you know, the first phase is putting this in next year, and this is a pretty big undertaking. And then the second year would be, how are we using it to possibly drive numbers on that school report card or a specific goal? Students on track or graduation rates, something of that nature.
And that makes me feel much comfortable, saying that we want to implement this so that we could start to monitor how we're driving the numbers on that report card. Because I have, I can share with the board president, when I looked at some of our numbers and comparisons, it does worry me. And, you know, we do, we invest in this school, and I want us to continue to invest in this school. And I, I want us to be intentional when we say we're gonna put money, time, and effort, whatever it takes, to get this goal, because we're gonna focus on this goal, because it's gonna get us to the, you know, long run, the overarching goals that we want to see.
What are everyone else's thoughts on this?
I just have a question about this. So I remember when in our, like, December discussion on a Saturday, when we talked about this, though, I could be misremembering, but we talked a little bit about maximizing curricular day, meaning like maybe seventh period rather than having that study hall early release, you're going to an internship, you're going to Triton. So that's later on in the process, and we're just starting with like the SEL part?
Yes, well, it's SEL and just general, how we are monitoring all the interventions that we've put in place since COVID to make sure students stay academically on progress.
Okay.
But yes, that was part of the discussion. It was not as much of the, like, tracking the specific school report card that it was, you know, trying to find career and apprenticeship internships for kids or redefining our curricular day so that maybe this district could provide a bus to Triton in the morning or in the afternoon for students to take dual credit or applied arts classes that we don't offer. Like coming up with creative ideas like that throughout this process.
So that's just later on?
Yes. See, and that's what we had talked about as a board and a group, is with these types of broad goals, SMART goals, we have to have one thing for each of these that we can achieve next year. So if we try to do three or four for just goal number one, before you know it, you're gonna have twenty-seven objectives you're trying to complete, and we're not gonna complete any. So yes, Claire, but you are remembering correctly.
I do have a question. How is targeted instruction currently being monitored? Because I'm assuming we're monitoring targeted instruction now. What tool are we using? And is panorama that tool, or is that a new one?
No, panorama is what we discussed as the board after that MTSS presentation about finding a digital tool that can track all of our interventions.
So that's the.
Right, that's, so we're gonna get panorama, get staff trained on it, establish the bent, the targets, we'll be monitoring and tracking teachers how to use panorama to use that data to drive instruction in their classroom. Dr. Freitas, in regards to how we're targeting instruction, you want to talk a little bit about STAR?
Yes, so we give the STAR, yeah, the STAR assessment three times a year, in the fall, kind of winter, and in the spring. And then teachers use that data to do adaptive learning, because they get a specific report on skills. So that's what we're doing currently, and our goal is to bring panorama aligned with STAR so we can track.
Thank you.
Academics, behavior, SEL, et cetera, all in one platform.
So probably the feedback I'm looking for tonight, remember, we said this was, this is why we saved this one for the end, that this might be the toughest one, because it's a very broad goal of curricular day rigor, SEL, new opportunities. And so the main focus was like to address kind of like the academic rigor and the SEL, is we first need to create a place of how we're targeting it and how we're measuring it and progress monitoring it. So that's why we started with this process or with this specific goal. So from this, I think the next, if the board's okay with the way this is written, the next phase, which we talked about, was the administration adding some action steps underneath this and then sharing this with stakeholders. I'll probably look to, I think it was Ms. Heruska and Ms. Gasker for some feedback once I work on that with the team, so that we can identify some measurable things that we would like to complete next year in relation to each one of these goals. So the question is, is the board okay with the general language that's being presented tonight? Or if there's, are there some modifications you'd like to see?
Can we add, strengthen the current STAR system? Because it just, the way it's written now, implement this new dashboard, it makes it seem like there's nothing currently in place.
Supplement?
Or supplement, complement, strengthen, like whatever, just so that it's clear that it's, we, because even I had a slip, right? And I was like, wait, what? Are we not monitoring? And yes, just to make it very clear that we are looking to complement or strengthen or supplement.
And we can also talk about the PSAT growth. I think there's some specific things. So I, we're in April, right? So we wanted to try to get this out to the stakeholders.
By the end of the year was the goal.
Yes, so if I could use maybe one more board meeting to let Dr. Freitas and his building team maybe tweak this to make sure the measurables are a little more identified in the goal. And then what board could, so we're talking about the complementing of the STAR, our STAR testing, and we already have our MTSS system, maybe should be specifically mentioned, so it's not so broad, right? Because it sounds like we're not doing anything, and we're really doing a lot.
Yes.
And the whole purpose after that presentation was like, the feedback the administration kind of all got from the board was like, well, you're doing all this stuff, how are we tracking it and making sure it's being effective?
Right, it shouldn't have to be in a spreadsheet of some sort, which is kind of how it was being handled, yeah.
Right.
No, I agree.
Okay, Dr. Freitas, you feel like you got enough to go back and work with your team on tweaking this a little more?
I do, I do, boss.
Okay.
Could I also ask, I think we talked about this last time, and this might get to some of the concerns raised. If you see these, if the stakeholders see these at first blush, it's not necessarily clear that these are long-term goals and each year they would build on each other and provide and allow us to address things in subsequent years. Because I think that's, that was some of the feedback we got on the goals themselves, right, was what are you doing right now? And I understand the urgency and the importance of all of these, but I think maybe some kind of a, you know, prelude sentence or two.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that when it goes out to the stakeholder groups and however it gets disseminated, it's a little easier to understand the thought process we've been talking about here.
Absolutely.
And semantically, would there be, like, I understand that SMART goal, that's a term that everyone knows SMART or measurable, all those things, but is there a better word that we could use on the top than goal? Because I think having two goals right next to each other, objective or something like that, because I definitely think it's important to explain the thought process, here's just year one, phase one. But I think the multiple goals, if we send it out to people who have not been delicately watching every minute of our discussions here at the board meeting, it'd be hard to understand what that actually means in context. So I don't know, I can't think of a better word than goal, but if there's something, like idea or objective or like intention, something.
Are you saying where it says goal number one?
Yeah, goal number one, goal number.
Is that, okay.
There are goals, there are.
Yeah, I mean.
There are goals that we need.
It's semantic, but I understand what you're saying.
We're spending twenty-two million dollars and we're gonna try and hit them. It's a lot of money we're spending to hit them, and that.
No, I think, but maybe instead of saying goal number one, and then underneath the SMART goal, like, it could just be goal number one, and then in twenty-two-twenty-three, it's gonna be, we haven't really laid out the snapshot to the general stakeholder yet.
Yeah, I know this isn't finalized, but I just think that there's a better use of words we can have.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a fair critique. Maybe, I don't know, do you, because we did adopt them as goals, and that was our, that was our process, so I would, I hear what you're saying, but I would hesitate to pull away from that. But if we didn't call them SMART goals, maybe on the second line?
Yeah, I, let me think, I mean, because like the top could be board of education goal, and then the second could be the administrative goal for the twenty-two-twenty-three school year. Like, there's a lot of cleaning up on the logistics that, to make it an easier read, right? It's not in order. We kind of did this left to right on ones that we felt like we started with the easier ones. So there's just some logistics that need to occur.
Ryan, do you want to say something?
I do.
Okay.
Trying to determine how much I want to say. I am not a fan of goal number one or goal number four. I've said that before. I don't think they're, I think they're inherent in what we're here for. And I fear that the focus on goal number one is going to drive toward US News and World Report, which is, in my opinion, meaningless. So I'd like to look away from that and understand how we are treating children and who we are bringing out of the institution, and that goes to work goals and exposure to careers and their experience in athletics, academics, and arts, and all of those things. So some of those, while we can put measures on them, they're not gonna be easily measured. And I hear you asking for metrics that aren't, aren't often easily quantifiable, they're qualitative, and if we lose sight of what those impacts are by getting wrapped up in language that, yes, we all understand we want rigor, but what that means for each individual student is going to be far different when you have students who are disconnected from school and need something to connect. And their starting point for success may be far different than the student who started with a lot of enrichment activities through their family and things like that. So I don't like getting wrapped up in these goals, specifically one and four, I think the other three. And that's not for me to dictate those things, but I'm just very cautious and concerned about the idea that we focus on quantifiable things just to say that they meet a certain number, because I don't think they tell the experience that the students will ultimately encounter here and leave here actually concerned about how that impacted their future. So I'll leave it at that.
I'm just gonna add, as a board member, many years, we have our members here who are student board members, and Claire, you expressed how excited you are to be accepted into a rigorous college. That wouldn't have happened if this was not a rigorous high school. And this high school, we've been proud to be able to offer that opportunity for students to, to rise to the occasion and to be able to do that. So as a board member, we have to do two things. We have a fiduciary responsibility for that twenty-two-twenty-three million dollars that we get every year to spend it and weigh so that you can maximize your potential. That's the score that maybe you're talking about makes you uncomfortable, but we still owe that to parents so that when students graduate, we know that they, they're doing their best and they are getting the opportunity that they hoped for. And then there is the other side. Yes, we want to know that individual, their needs are being met and a dashboard like this would meet that. As board members, it's a hard job. We have to do both. We can't ignore one or the other. We owe it to our community that pays for this and puts a lot of money into our properties, our taxes and everything, and make sure the rigor is here so that our students can get to where they want to be. So I understand what you're saying, but I see the big picture and the little picture.
Yeah, if I may on that, I just think like what you said, that rigor looks so different for everyone else. And I, for every single student here. And I think a lot of the metrics, like I'm looking at, I was looking at the report card. Those are all great things. I, it's great to see our graduation rate is high, all of those great things. But as an individual student, I think, when we had discussed goal one earlier, and I understand that things changed and we're trying to be very specific here. But when we discussed it earlier, it was what can we do to max, like the hours you spend here? What can we do to make it most meaningful for that individual student? And I think that sometimes when we try to hit like the report card, I get that, and you want to see it's a good school. You want parents to be able to see it's a good school. But I think that, I, I agree with what you're saying, that it's a little scary to kind of go into those things. Because you can look at those numbers and do they really reflect the student experience? So I like the idea of the next steps and that we are, the panorama, you can see everything. And then these students can be helped, but also that our students who maybe have two study halls right now and could be taking an internship or taking the bus to Triton or something like that are also being met. So I don't know the right answer, but that's, I.
I think we are definitely going through an identity crisis. Because Laura, as a mom, I can appreciate the, I want my kid to go to a rigorous college, but maybe that's not what my child wants to do, right? So if we are here to promote a pathway for all students, then we have to define what academic rigor means, right? Because academic rigor to you, if I may, clearly means like a really high score on the SAT and getting accepted into, into a prestigious college or university. Do I want that for my child? Absolutely. He's going to kill me. Can my child do that? I don't, I don't know, like his heart isn't, he, he wouldn't do well at a big school, right? And I think we're here for the individualized student experience. We heard a lot about how music is going to make a student's experience here individual, right? Make it great. But again, I think that with this goal, I, I'll, I'll agree with, with Brian. And it's, let's define what we mean by academic rigor. Let's, let's define what we mean by, like Claire keeps saying, like, an internship is really going to make that experience holistic. Maybe we encourage students to take a music class so that we can get the enrollment numbers up, right? That's going to, that's what's going to make the student's experience here holistic. Numbers, you know, honestly, numbers, data. We have a 95, 97, 98% freshmen on track. What does that really mean, right? Like, yes, 97% of them are going to fail the class. Okay, great. Then you look at the community college remediation, right? Let's, let's, let's make sure that when we explore rigor, it's about making sure students meet their fullest potential, whatever that potential might be. I, I don't know what that potential is, right? It, it's personalized to each individual student.
But if your student said, Mom, I wanted to go to this college, but I can't go because my grade, I'm just not good enough. And you know your student had the ability, but we didn't push him or we didn't have programs in place for him to maximize his ability. How would you feel about that?
So I think that when I chose RB, I chose it because it was providing my, it was providing an individualized student experience. It was providing the arts. It was providing sports because I want him to do both. So, and again, I think that academic, we can get into DEI with this too, right? And like the trap I want to open up today, I don't know, I'm not sure. Because that's a whole other discussion, right? Like, let's look at the AP numbers. Let's look at the dual credit numbers. Let's look at the dual enrollment numbers. That's academic rigor. Do we want to address that tonight? I don't know. That, that, because to me, that's what academic rigor means. It doesn't mean if you're going into a, a, a four-year school. It, it might mean that you have decided what your pathway is going to be, right? And that's a personal conversation that happens between a child and their, and their families. It's, if my child told me, I want to go to this school, well, I'm sorry, honey. Tuition-wise, I don't know, right? So then we add tuition into the mix. That's, that's a whole other, that's a private conversation, a decision for a parent and a child to make, right? Do I want my kid in an AP class? No, I'd probably encourage him to go to Triton and take a dual-credit class. Because I think he's going to get more out of a dual-credit course at Triton than out of an AP class that's rigged. The tests are standardized tests. My child will not do well in an AP class, right? So like, that's a whole other discussion we got to have. So for this purpose of academic rigor, let's define what academic rigor really means. It's not a standardized test score. I can tell you that right now. It's not.
And I'm not saying that. I think as a school district, though, we just need to be cognizant of the report card. If you're buying into a neighborhood and it says, I'm going to send my kid to that high school. And when I send my child to this high school, I want to know that if they choose to go to college, that they're going to have a fair chance at passing their classes in college. I don't think that's a high expectation. I think that's something we owe our community. And I'm hoping that this kind of dashboard gets us to that point. But people were two, three jobs to maintain their properties or houses or taxes because they want to know that when their child graduates high school, that they have options. And that, to me, as a board member, I take that as my fiduciary responsibility and something to oversee. So that's me. Maybe I'm one of seven, but that's me.
I, I guess I'm still asking, what are, what are you looking for? Is it, is it US News and World Report? Is it not? I don't know. What are you looking for as the definition of this being the desirable place?
So like Dr. Skink has said, we're, you're going to implement this board and then we're going to look to see if it improves how we perform on the report card. The report card compares all the schools in the state of Illinois. And the report card gives parents a sense. When you're buying into a community, nobody on this board can tell them, you didn't look at that. Because you, when you looked at what schools your kids are going to go to, you wanted to know that they would receive a good education. I don't think that we can say, we're not even concerned about that at all. That, that would not be true.
I don't think it's a dichotomy. I feel like I'm being told that the number is the thing. And I think I'm trying to say I would rather not focus on the number. While I can understand it's a point of pride, I, I fear that it becomes a point of focus that loses the big picture from the individual that we are here to serve.
Okay, well, so my bias would be if we implement this for a year and we actually regress on the report card, then I would have concerns.
This doesn't have direct relation. I mean, I think you, this is, this is to put in place to make sure all the things we have put in place since COVID with the money, additional social workers and STAR. And this is to make sure that we are making, students are on track. Being on track is college or career ready, that they're passing the required graduation requirements, right? Now, the, the next, the way I understood the goal is similar to how Claire explained the goal from our discussion. The idea was to try to create multiple pathways. So that may be through testing and AP classes. That may through, through internships or dual-credit. That may be through, one of the reasons, you know, we talk about taxpayers, individual taxpayers. And one of the reasons we eliminated the fine arts survey goal is because we heard from so many students that it was hindering the classes they can take. And now, as you saw with our staffing report in March, right? We have over 1,200 kids in applied arts classes. Okay, so now music's kind of suffered from that, but applied arts is going through the roof. I mean, that's creating multiple pathways.
Right.
That's creating, maximizing the curricular day so students can choose. I want to focus more on cooking. I don't want, that student may not want to take the required fine arts survey class. So that's kind of what this board has had to do during that goal session was create more opportunities so kids and their parents can have individual choice.
So the only thing I would, I, I agree with what, what's been, been said here. You know, the, the, the academic rigor phrase is something we amended when we went to adopt these goals.
Yeah, I'm not saying to put anything in there. I mean, this is.
No, 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 but I'm just saying, I, I think, I think it's an important kind of look back. When we had our Saturday session, we didn't, we did focus more on the holistic view of the student with a knowledge that we are an academically strong institution. We have the report card as a measurement tool for that. I think we all have a lot of, you know, pride in the academics that are offered here. And I think you're right, we need to be constantly vigilant of that and mindful. That's certainly an important part of, of, of the experience. But when we went to adopt these goals in January, and someone clarify the calendar if I get it wrong, this, this concept of academic rigor kind of reinserted itself into it. And I think it's, it's leading to some of this debate now. I mean, I, I'd like to see us move forward. I think we have shared agreement on, on the way this SMART goal is written. This makes sense. I think this is a subject that we're going to keep coming back to because I think that definition of, of success is broad, but it's also individual. And so if this is the administration identified SMART goal of a, of a deliverable based on the pandemic years we're coming out of and the, the multiple discussions we've had here. I mean, I'd like to see us adopt this in its draft form tonight and be able to present it and get some additional feedback. And if we hear from the, the, the public that we want more of a focus on traditional academics, if you will, then I think we have to take that back to the board and, and, and have that discussion. But I think there's, to me, this is now drafted to a place that represents our, our prior discussions and, and lets us move forward and lets the administration do their job of coming up with specific tasks and deliverables so that we can ultimately adopt these SMART goals, calling them SMART goals still, for the 22, 23 year. So I'd like to see us move forward on that, if everyone's good.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. And as you mentioned, you said we should absolutely be cognizant or vigilant to watch these things. And that's what I'm just saying. We definitely want to be watching all the metrics we have that says we're at an academically rigorous school. That's all I'm saying, that we have to intentionally say that. And I'm not opposed to this goal. And I'm hoping that as we are still diligent of all those other ways we monitor through the students that we just recognized last month and the national merit and the school report card, how many people are getting scholarships, scholarships, money. There are many indicators, hard measurables to, to measure that rigor. And, and I don't think we can ignore that. So I have no problem doing that. I just want to be able to say that we also need to intentionally be saying, the two, we need to look at the two together.
Any additional comments?
I, I think we're going to continue to see the academic numbers. And we can continue to look at those. No one, I think, is looking here to say, oh, I hope our test scores fall. I, I hope we have better metrics to understand how every individual is leaving this institution prepared for the next step in life. So I think, I, I'm actually, to speak to the community, I'm hoping we get good feedback so that we can continue to develop these.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Last chance? We will move on to new business. We've got some items there.
So first item of new business is the draft of the meetings for the 22, 23 school year. These are some minor, the next couple of items are housekeeping items that need to take place on a regular basis. So one of those is setting the board meeting dates. So this is your first read, a draft of meeting dates. And this follows historically where we have about six months with two meetings and then six months with one meeting based on different school breaks and summer vacation or the summer break, consistent with a two, a seven o'clock start on Tuesdays. So the board can approve this or adopt this in the May consent agenda unless we receive feedback or questions. I didn't receive any as of this time.
I just show up when you tell us to come.
I do have one, and I'm sorry I didn't email you earlier. And I just remembered. Can we check with the feeder schools? I know, for example, Comaric, which is the elementary school my son currently attends, they have their board meetings at the exact same date and time. And this year, there were multiple instances where I probably should have been there, but I couldn't because I was here. And my husband wasn't as nice about reading my letter. He said, nope, not doing it, because it was a pretty spicy letter. But anyway, can we just check with everyone around just to see? I mean, I know I'm just one person, but I don't know if there's ever been that kind of conflict.
Yeah, I mean, we, I would say we could check. But I don't know, I mean, if so, if they are on the same day, are you asking me to ask them to move theirs?
No, I'm just saying to, I don't know. I mean, again, I, I don't know what a good, because you know, everyone will be like, well, this is when we've had it. Like, we're not going to change. I can see that. But just maybe start a conversation to see. I don't know.
What are you proposing?
I would have loved to have been at their board meetings this year. I don't know, but it's going to affect anyone else.
Some boards go first week, some boards go first and third, some go second and fourth. It's kind of all.
Some of Thursdays, I know, right?
Yeah.
I think 96 is Thursday.
Anyway, just, just to keep that in mind.
No, and I, but I think it's a, it's a good reminder that, and not that this would have satisfied your particular concern, but it is broadcast on RB TV. You guys staying here for public comment is probably the, one of the largest crowds we've had in some time. So thank you all for your engagement. It's appreciated. But we do know people watch the, I was going to call it a show. I was going to watch the, the meeting on, on the YouTube video. And that's, that's helpful too. Because we hear from people after that.
So I know like 95 went to taping, so maybe that's something we could talk to Comaric about. Maybe they tape and post their meetings so like when board members, if there is a Catholic, people can.
Yeah, I just, I saw the dates and I'm like, oh, here we go. Like again, this will be fine, right, for, for me, but.
Well, we have talked about in the past, I mean, we start at seven. You know, we, we talked about, you know, perhaps doing, at some point in the year, a meeting at a different time of day to, to be available to other families that may work in the evening and not be available at, at 7:00 PM. I think, you know, during the, the summer, when we did the, the special committee meeting that Dr. Freitas referenced, we did, did do that during day hours, I believe. That was a 9:00 AM. So I think that's, you know, if, if the board is, is looking at some specific content, that maybe we could move a date around. I think we're open to that. That's flexible if, if that's the, the will of the board. Any thoughts? I mean, it's hard with, with traditional hour jobs to, to move it to any other time.
Yeah, no, I, I was just proposing, just keep that in mind, that other, that our partic, that one particular feeder school has their meetings at the exact same time. And I don't know if it, again, it's going to affect anyone or if anyone cares, but just.
This calendar is published for the year, though. And I think it helps, you know, that we publish a calendar for a year because it helps you set up any kind of arrangements. For, for us as board members, I, I don't volunteer for things on these dates because I know a year out.
No, I, I agree, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, right, right. Like I, I, yes. Anyway, or maybe we approve ours first.
Then you could lean on that.
I could just be like, oops. Anyway, just keep it in mind. Again, I don't know that anyone is going to care or.
So we'll move that for approval at the next board meeting then.
Okay.
And then board authorization items.
Superintendent and assistant superintendent are the recommended signatories. This needs to be approved every year for the impressed account and financial reports for the 22, 23 school year. This is a formality. So this is, there isn't a resolution on here. But if we wanted to put all these items under one consent agenda item, we can do that next meeting. It's whatever the board prefers.
Okay. Does anyone have any objections to that or thoughts? Okay, so that would be preferred for the next to make it as a consent item?
Same with the authorization of signatories for the board, to the president and secretary.
I apologize. I, I thought you were indicating you wanted group one, two, three, and four all in one consent item at the next meeting.
Yes, I am.
You are, okay.
I'm just reading through the board authorization part. So the next one is for the
Okay.
Authorization of signatories for the board, which is the president, the secretary, and the vice president.
Okay.
And then the last piece is the designation of the district newspapers. Whenever we have to put anything for public posting would be the suburban life, the landmark. And so if everybody's okay with these, I'll put all four of these items on the consent agenda item for board authorization.
Okay, I don't see any objections to that.
Mary Ann, we are good with that? Okay, thank you. District depository, again, First American Bank, and that's it.
Put that on the consent, right?
Yeah, I think, I think one, B, one through four.
Correct.
Yeah. And then item C is approval of contract for postage meter. This is a first read.
This is a Dr. Smetan item. It's a very minor amount, but we do have to bring it to the board every couple of years.
Yes. So we currently have a five-year lease agreement for the district's postage meter machine with Pitney Bowes, which is expiring in August. Five years ago, the district completed a very thorough analysis of the meter volume, staff usage, feedback, different vendors. And it was determined at that time to transition to a smaller postage meter machine with the current vendor. The district has been, continues to be satisfied with Pitney Bowes, as well as the smaller machine has worked out for us. The current model that we have no longer exists, it's been replaced with a, a new model that is similar in capacity, but it's compliant with USPS regulations. Currently now, the smallest machine that they make is 95 letters per minute, they no longer make 70 letters per minute. The lease agreement covers any service for the machine that may be needed for the duration of the lease. But to, to my knowledge, this new machine, I don't believe we've needed to use the service, which has certainly been an improvement than in the past. So this is pretty much a break even, I'm, I'm just recommending that we go with the standard machine, I don't, from our analysis, don't believe we need the label printer or the 10-pound scale. And so this would roughly save us $60 a year, so it's basically the same amount that we're currently paying and this is a first read.
I do not receive any questions on this, so we could either approve it tonight or put it in a consent on the May meeting, whatever the board prefers. Would it help you if it was approved tonight?
It, it doesn't matter.
So it's an expenditure we.
Can do it?
If it was, okay, we just wait till next meeting unless someone is. Dr. Smetan, I defer to you if you're looking for this now, if it's helpful.
Can we mix the consent with expenditures and non-exp?
Yeah, we, we can, we can put an expenditure, we've done that before on consent, but.
Okay.
I have time, so whatever the board prefers.
Okay. It was drafted as a first read, let's keep it as a first read, that seems easy for tonight, we're, we've been talking for a while. Visitor statement, second opportunity, would anyone else like to address the board for a second time this evening, you're welcome to do so, or first time if you haven't? Okay. Okay, we had no additional discussion items requested, any consideration of items for future meetings? Looking, looking. I don't see any, and then matters for closed session, we have personnel, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations and school safety. Ms. Gasko, would you be so kind as to read the resolution?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. Student discipline, purchase, sale or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations and school safety. Roll call, please.
We need a second, please.
Sorry, oh, second, sorry.
Second.
Phil Durkin, second.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Truska?
Yes.
The board?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Salas?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move to closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you.